Today is Tuesday, August 5th. Do you please take your seats? I'd like to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council. Again, it's Tuesday, August 5th. Okay, now we're on. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
... Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson, Levinberge, President of Quorum. Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Englander moves. Laban seconds, next.
Commitment to resolutions for approval.
Weezer moves. Buscaino seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, if we could all rise for our flag salute will be led today by Mr. Bonin.
Everybody, please place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Madam Clerk, why don't we begin going through the agenda?
Items 1 and 2 are items known as for public caring. The Department of Building and Safety reports that Items 1E and G may be received and filed in as much as the liens have been paid.
All right, so do we have cards?
Yes, cards on Items 1 and 2.
Okay, let's move on.
Items 3 through 6 are items for which public caring have been held.
Members, specials? I do not see any. Let's prepare to vote. Mr. Englander.
I want to bring your attention to Item... I know 3 and 4 are commission appointments. One of those from my district, Victor Sampson, so if we can go on consent, I know he's here, I just wanted to point him out and say he's terrific and thank him for serving.
Okay, all right, so maybe we go on consent here, Mr. Englander, because of what you've done. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Congratulations to the commissioners. Let's move on. Madam Clerk, to our next section of business here.
Items 7 through 19 are items for which public caring have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before us. Mr. Buscaino.
Mr. President, good morning. Item 8, please, for reappointment. Commissioner Rodriguez.
Let's hold.
Item 8.
Item 8?
Thank you.
Members? Cards, Madam Clerk?
Cards on Items 9 and 15.
Okay, let's hold those items, and we'll prepare to vote on the other items. Members, those specials? So let's, again, Madam Clerk, prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
And what do we have next?
Mr. President, there's a request to send Item 13 forthwith.
Without objection, that will be the order.
On the supplemental agenda, Items 20 and 21 are items for which public caring have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
So without objection, those items are before us. Do we have cards?
Cards on Item 21.
Okay, let's deal with Item 20 then. Members, any specials on Item 20? Well, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings council to Items called special.
Joey B., why don't we go to Item 8? Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you. We can call up Ms. Monica Rodriguez.
Please come forward.
But before I do that, I want to actually recognize Commissioner President Kevin James, who's here. Thank you, Mr. James, for your leadership. And actually, you're celebrating a birthday tomorrow. You may not be here tomorrow, but happy birthday tomorrow.
And he kept his promise, Mr. Buscaino. He indicated to me that he was going to get a haircut, and he did.
Oh, he did.
And he did do that.
I think Tom called him out.
You look great. Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Rodriguez, thank you for agreeing to serve another term. Colleagues, we were here a year ago when Ms. Rodriguez was before us in her initial appointment to the Board, and now she's seeking a reappointment for the full five-year term. And give us your take on the department and the entire Public Works family. What's been your experience this last year, and why do you want to continue to want to serve as Commissioner of Public Works?
Well, thank you, council member. I have to say that it's been a tremendous privilege to be serving in this capacity. I've had the good fortune of having a career that has spanned many different segments of the public sector as well as the private sector, and I have to say, being in this particular capacity has been quite fulfilling. It's given me both the opportunity to engage with residents throughout the city and address the concerns that they have, but also, more importantly, really work in tandem with our Bureau Heads to help identify areas where we can make tremendous efficiencies, and I know that we've done that. One example is that we've actually consolidated a lot of the high school intern programs that we had with the Mayor's Summer Youth Employment Program so that we could have a consistent and singular effort rather than having a bifurcated one. And there's just a number of issues in that regard, as well as our pursuit of helping identify efficiencies, whether it comes to street services, whether it comes to technology improvement for the Bureau of Street Lighting. It's been an exciting endeavor, and I'm just happy to have the opportunity to serve.
Share with us the biggest challenges facing Public Works. As we have seen in this last year, our crumbling infrastructure, most recently the water pipe rupture on Sunset. I know you don't oversee DWP, but also in light of the Save Our Streets Initiative in trying to address the backlog of the $4 billion problem fixing our streets, 40% of our sidewalks are crumbling. Share with us your point of view as what we've been trying to do here around this horseshoe is trying to address those inefficiencies, even more so with the recent report that the Controller put out, which we'll be hearing in our committee. Just give me your thoughts on that and moving forward.
Well, obviously, I think we can always talk about being under-resourced financially in terms of our ability to deliver services. Clearly, there are some investments that we need to make that will produce a return on the investments, like the upgrades to our asphalt plants so that we can help expand and maximize our production levels. There are things like that that we need to start investing in, but I would say, most importantly, that one of the biggest areas of concern that I have, and I think my colleague, Commissioner James, would agree, is that there's a tremendous gap between our institutional knowledge of individuals that are approaching retirement age, and we're having a huge gap in our workforce, and that seems to also be one of our biggest challenges that we're being pressed with. And so, as we see our city forces continue to be stretched, it's one of those challenges. But I have to also take this opportunity to give tremendous thanks to the members of the Department of Public Works who did such a phenomenal job in getting Sunset Boulevard back up and running in such an efficient and swift time. I thought it was a tremendous example of what they can do, what our departments can do collaboratively, and I thought it was just an outstanding example of why we need to continue to support our city workforce and the resources that they have.
But let me say, I look forward to working alongside you and your colleagues on the Commission. It's such an awesome responsibility. One of the main complaints, concerns that we get on a daily basis is fixing streets, addressing sidewalks, trimming trees. One of core functions that we put out is the Public Works, aside from public safety, Public Works is a core function that we need to continue to address and embrace in the city of Los Angeles. So some trying times ahead of us, and looking at efficiencies, and looking forward to working with you. Colleagues, Ms. Rodriguez is capable and willing to continue to serve on this Commission, and based on her skills or knowledgeable ability, her commitment to serve, I ask her an eye vote moving this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Mr. Englander.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Buscaino as well, and Monica, thank you. I've known you for many, many years, and I've had the privilege of working alongside you in different capacities, and you're truly a breath of fresh air. You bring a whole different perspective, and you really, truly care about what you do, and you do your homework, and you do it well, and you're always focused. When I first came to the city of Los Angeles in terms of working here in the building, I questioned the need, quite frankly, to have a full-time Board of Public Works. It's the only full-time Board in the entire city that we have, and there was a lot of talk at the time, from the council members at the time, to abandon it. And I will tell you, I think it's one of the most important full-time, or period, Boards we've got, bar none. The core functions of local government, from public safety, police, and fire, and infrastructure, are the three most important things we do, with so many other things we do that are critically important. Those are the three most important: sanitation, paving our streets, trimming our trees, fixing our sidewalks, all the things the city has failed to do, and that we're now focused on as a new energized body, if you will. And you, in working alongside Kevin, who I've had the honor and privilege of working with very closely over the last couple of years as well, it's been terrific, because I think we've shed a new light on what needs to be done. It's not just putting a lantern on the issue, but a spotlight. I think the new audit that shows our infrastructure is in crisis, that our city is crumbling, and we've got to invest. Having people that are focused on this full-time, smart people that care about it, is so important to all of us and to all the Angelinos throughout the city, and I'm honored to stand here alongside with my colleagues and reaffirm your position in the Board of Public Works. Keep up the good work.
Thank you so much, Mr.
Mr. Laban.
Thank you very much. I rise proudly to salute Monica Rodriguez for her years of service and commitment now as a Public Works Commissioner. It is about public safety, public works, public health, public education, all these things that we do. And, Mr. Englander, long ago, someone told me it's very difficult to cut a ribbon 30 feet underground in a pipe. So don't blame anybody but ourselves and those who went before. They try to do the job, the money that we give them. And the Board of Public Works, I would suggest to VAC in next year's budget, that we expand it to seven regional areas of the city of Los Angeles. I want you to kick that around, Monica. Use the same planning areas. We shouldn't be competitive as council districts, but competitive as regional areas to look at things to change and improve in our public works. Our city really boomed from 1913, when the aqueduct came, to now, 2014, '15, and yes, there are things that are aged. And when we had a series of blowouts years ago, it wasn't the oldest areas in the city or the oldest pipes, because the steel was stronger when they made those pipes, but weaker areas in the West Los Angeles area due to the time of which they were making steel, which had to do with World War II. All those facts. The one thing I want you to do, and I see the fine President of the Board of Public Works, I want you to look at street cleaning, because I think street cleaning is something that sanitation could do, as they do in Chicago, New York, and other cities, and a combined effort there, and have street services take care of the roadways and work with us on trees, and also to work with us on sidewalks. Give the street cleaning to sanitation, because it all ends up in the drain if it doesn't get done, and then it all ends up in the ocean. But Monica, thank you and your family for your commitment to this. I'm very proud of you for the days when you worked for Mayor Reardon, and you accelerated up the ladder there to Assistant Deputy Mayor, whatever title it was. It could have been higher, because you're very special, Monica Rodriguez. I'd say for an eye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Laban. So with that said, members, let's prepare to vote. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And congratulations. No applause, please. Can we move to Item 2? And, Madam Clerk, I think Item 2 was called special... Oh, Mr. Kokorian, I didn't see you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to ask that Item 5, which we've already approved, be sent in the most urgent possible forthwith manner, whatever the appropriate term of art is.
Whatever it is.
For the fastest possible forthwith, that's what I would like to request.
Okay, so we will send it as quickly as we can. Mr. City Attorney and City Clerk, I'll let you...
You should vote specially to send it urgent forthwith.
Okay, let's have a quick vote to send it urgent forthwith. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Urgent forthwith. Let's go to Item 2. I think initially, Madam Clerk, Item 2 was held special by Cards. Am I correct?
Yes, Mr. President.
So it's my understanding that these members no longer want to speak on this item. Tony Richmond, I think this is Elizabeth Diamond, and Alan Diamond. So it would appear that they're comfortable with this, so let's just call a roll. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Thank you. Let's move on now to Item 9. Ms. Shaheen? Ms. Shaheen on Item 9?
Communication from the City Attorney relative to authorization for one deputy City Attorney for the California Environment Quality Act. Resources of community plant updates to secure and control the transfer 168,959,000 from this account of the reserve for future to the following accounts within the long-range... Long-range, get it, folks? Long-range. Is there a hidden agenda here? Is there a hidden agenda here? Planning on special revenue funds, fund number fifty-two F, for the city attorney under account title sixty-eight-one-one-two-L, for this amount, special revenue funds. We, the public, demand clarity, transparency, when it comes to the resources of the public's interests and how public money is spent. Public money is spent. This is not a squash fund. What about the comp time that you gave our rank and file?
Mr. President, he's not talking about this item.
And on topic, to authorize a resolution...
Ms. Shaheen, if you'd please go back on the item.
I'm speaking, sir. May I finish?
No, if you speak on the item, you can finish.
I'm on topic. Authorize a resolution for one deputy city attorney titled one-two-three, class code zero-five-five-two, for the period of August fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen through June thirtieth. That's a lot of damn money that taxpayers should front up. We have rank and file that need paychecks and real money, sir. Keep your six seconds.
All right, Mr. Corretts, you wanted to say something?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to point out that this is in response to a strong push by the community to update our community plans. A lot of conflict is created by not having them updated. It creates a lot of conflict over development. If we can get our community plans rewritten and updated, it will save the city money, it will save everybody involved, including community members, a lot of time, and having a city attorney dedicated to this will be critical. So I asked my colleagues for an eye vote, and I will ask that this be sent forthwith after as well.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. That makes sense to me. Let's, Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, we'll send this forthwith. Item fifteen, Mr. Herman.
My time's running, but in one minute, I'll just diffuse this real quickly. I find it shameful that we have to spend two thousand dollars for a vehicle repair for maintenance, and there's no transparency as to what the breakdown and itemization of these costs and charges are for. So again, within one minute, I say let's have transparency and cut the garbage of taking away from the public's interest. Thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, we'll go to item one, held special by cards. One of them, it doesn't have a name, but I have a Fernando Flores. Neston Romero.
Moreno.
Moreno. So please, Mr. Parks?
We might save some time, but Building and Safety is willing to continue one A, C, and H for two weeks, and so it may cause those speakers not to have to...
Okay, so we do have one A and one C. So Mr. Parks is indicating that the department is requesting that these be continued for two weeks, I'm assuming so that they can have conversation with you to try to work this out. So Patrice, if there's a two-week request, what day would that be on?
Be August nineteenth.
Building and Safety is right here.
That would be August?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth. So if I could get Mr. Barnes and Moreno, Romero Moreno, to speak to the gentleman in the first row with the vest here? We'll get translation. So if you go to the first row, where's... I need a little help here from our translator. If you could explain to the first gentleman. Right over here. All we want is to chat with these people. Now, I think he wants to come and speak to the gentleman with the vest. Mr. Barnes, go over there. Nestor, same thing. Thank you, Mr. Parks. That'll be continued to August nineteenth. I still have a Fernando Flores. Or, Madam Clerk, what did we do with one F?
Item one F is still before council.
Oh, still before. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Flores.
Good morning. On all five, I got a citation order to comply. The address was twelve fifty-four. All the proof that I have is from nineteen sixty. I have four items which that address never existed. The only ones that I have is thirty-seven ninety-nine Roberta Street. Here is the original one, and I got proof from the service discharge papers, county records, city records, they don't show Montecito. The only one that shows Montecito is with a Building and Safety. So I was improperly notified, and I protested these charges.
Okay, Mr. Flores. Madam Clerk, suppose, Mr. Cedillo, if you would dispatch one of your deputies to have a conversation with Mr. Flores, what we can do is continue this for one week. I'll have someone from the council district chat with you. Patrice, that continuance would take us to what day?
To August twelfth.
August twelfth. So, okay, we'll continue that item. Was there anything else for us to vote on?
Yes, item one D.
Okay, no cards on that. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
I'm going to quickly go to general public comment. Mr. Herman, if you come forward.
How many times... You don't have to put your head down, Labange. It's all right. It's not going to hurt your feelings. So the whole issue on public comment is, yes, I'm going to say things that you dislike because we, the public, dislike your actions when you cannot provide us with health and safety concerns, like you had a discussion this morning in front with Mr. Weezer and all the wonderful people from the county, right? Mental health service, health service, county services. Obamacare sucks, and it messed up the whole program, but it's not Obama to blame. It's you Democrats, you Democrats who don't take a damn minute of your time to really step up into the game and deal with the real issue for public concern. And yeah, Mr. Busciano is getting two hundred thousand a year, and he sits there laughing. Why? Because he doesn't care about you Angelinos. He never did and probably never will. They made two hundred thousand dollars to make decisions for all of you Angelinos, you there and you there, and we, the public, have to put up with this nonsense. It's all nonsense. So cure and correct all the problems you're making in this city against the public. You deny these three gentlemen, or I should say the two from Mr. Parks' area, to speak under Building and Safety citations of liens. Liens are illegal. Liens are predatory. And if you don't send these people certified mail to notify them in advance, how dare you put a lien against their property, you hoarders? You're the worst of the worst when you don't help your constituents and you put these bogus liens on their properties. So Mr. Shrimp Boy and Mr. Big Ears, and you who don't want to pay attention to me, Mr. Correia, because you turn your chair, take note, we're back.
All right, let's... Mr. Corretts.
I just wanted to ask that item twenty go forthwith.
Without objection. Let's go to item, I believe, item twenty-one. Mr. Cedillo, would you like me to call up... I have some cards. You want to do the cards first? Okay, Andrew Rivas. Martha. Martha, I'm going to have you come up and pronounce your last name, followed by Mr. Herman. Please come forward, sir.
My name is Andrew Rivas, and I am the Director of Government and Community Relations for the Archdiocese of Los Angeles. The Archdiocese supports the efforts of the L.A. City Council to protect the rights of unaccompanied minors and to oppose any efforts to change the William Wilberforce Trafficking Victims Protection Reauthorization Act of two thousand and eight. The Archdiocese pledges its continued support to work with city and local officials to find constructive solutions to the challenges posed by immigration and the other issues we face in our communities. Special thank you to members Cedillo, Ofero, and Price. Thank you very much for this effort.
Okay, next, please come and identify yourself.
Good morning. Buenos dias. My name is Angela Sombrano, and I'm the Executive Director of the National Network of Mexican Migrant Leaders and Organizations, and President of the Central American Resource Center, CArescent's Board of Directors. I want to congratulate members Cedillo, Ofero, Price, and Councilwoman Martinez for their leadership in bringing forward the resolution urging President Obama and the Department of Homeland Security to ensure the human treatment of the thousands of unaccompanied minors being detained and to extend the necessary protections for the children, including legal support and expeditions reunification with their families and consideration of their status of refugees. The Torture Victims Protection and Reauthorization Act, signed by President Bush in two thousand and eight, was enacted precisely to protect the vulnerable, accompanied children arriving at our borders. The fact that a large number of children now need protection is not a reason to repeal or to modify the law. In November two thousand and thirteen, the United States Conference of Catholic Bishops led a delegation to Mexico, Guatemala, El Salvador, and Honduras to determine why children were migrating in such alarming rates. They found that while extreme poverty was a push factor, the overriding determinant was violence at the state, local levels, and the breakdown of the rule of law, which has threatened citizen's security and created a culture of fear and hopelessness. A repeal of the law does little to address the factors driving the children to migrate. Thank you for your commitment to ensuring that the rights of the refugee children are protected, that their lives depend on American system of due process and equal protection of the law. Thank you for protecting these principles enshrined in the Constitution of the United States of America.
Thank you very much. Next, please identify yourself.
Good morning. Martha Arevalo, Executive Director of CArescent. First of all, would like to thank the City of Los Angeles. I'm proud to be an Angelino today because you chose to be a city of compassion that welcomes children and protects children. As a Salvadoran, I would also really like to thank our council member Cedillo for taking the leadership on this issue, also council member Ofero, Price, and Martinez for introducing this resolution. It's important that as a country, we make a decision of what type of country, what type of character we want to have. Do we want to be a country of hatred, or do we want to be a country of compassion that protects children from whatever parts of the world that they come from? I'm happy to see that Los Angeles has chosen to be a city of compassion that accepts and protects children. I also want to say that it's critical that TVPRA, which Angela mentioned, the law that protects the rights of children, is protected, because again, we must decide as a country if we can protect our children. Thank you very much, City of Los Angeles. Thank you to the mayor and to the city council for taking leadership on this issue.
Okay, come on. In fact, Mr. Herman, Carlos is before you.
Good morning.
Carlos, we're going to have Mr. Herman first, then you to close.
Have we not heard all fellow Americans, and more so you, the House, on recess? I'm talking about Congress. I'm talking about you, Senate. You, Mr. Fuentes. You, Mr. Bloomfield, who came from Sacramento. Have you not first put and foremost urged the protection of Americans, the refugees who are here, and you cannot provide them access to the needs and necessities that we all drive on? Not all of us are refugees. What about the homeless Americans in America today who are refugees and unemployed? What result if we bring children here and can't provide them an education? We cannot provide them the access to the medical treatment that you cannot establish? What results of protection are necessary to humanitarian need for the people of Los Angeles, the homeless, housing, jobs, and work? What relief? It's in your writing. What relief? Americans have become victims of poor judgment by becoming the next refugees when treatment for programs, service, activities are only unequal, because you parade upon the vulnerable, the weak, the refugees. What about our veterans, our VAs? And what about the people, the civilians of Los Angeles, our Angelinos? They're refugees. They came here for an opportunity, and you deny them the same access, access to life, liberty, and without virtue. And I, Batman Junior, has made it a point, service this community and have respect.
Thank you. If we could have Carlos, Paco Rondo, please... Carlos, please come forward.
Buenos dias. Good morning, Mr. President, members of the city council. I'm here with Sandra Rosato, Executive Director of Clinica Montseñor Romero, a very important organization serving Central American. I also represent solid, desirado, and American leadership, educational fund, and I'm also the president of the Board of Clinica Montseñor Romero. I'm here to encourage you all to support item twenty-one, supporting unaccompanied children, Central American refugees who are crossing the border, seeking a better life. I just came back this morning at two-thirty from Tijuana. I went with the Vice Minister of Foreign Affairs, who went to look at the conditions of the Central American children, and we didn't find a lot of Central American children in Tijuana because they are in the other side of the country, but we found some. And I just want to share a little bit about our conversation with some of them. We met with four children ages fourteen to seventeen, and one of them, they'd been here for about a month, and the Mexican immigration are in the process of deporting them. And it's so difficult to talk to the children, to see what they're going through. One of them asked me, "Is the United States beautiful?" And I said to him, "No, it's not." And I say that to him because I know that by saying, "Yes, it's beautiful," he's going to try again. And he actually told me that he's being deported, and he said to me, "Well, I'm going to be deported these days." He's only fifteen, but I'm going to try again. I'm going to go back. I'm going to come back to try again. There was another boy, only sixteen, who is being detained in Tijuana, and we were actually able to call his father. He hasn't seen his father for over ten years. He doesn't remember his father. So I just want to share that with you. So thank you for your support, council members Cedillo, council member Ofero, Price, and Nuri Martinez for your support and leadership. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and good to see you. Okay, I want to... Okay, I want to get a glance at Mr. Cedillo. Do you, I have other members on the queue, or did you want to start things off, or? How you want to play it?
At your pleasure, sir.
Okay, then I'll, let me get Mr. Weezer, followed by Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank, Mr. Farrell, would you like to go first? Well, thank you, and I just want to thank our colleagues who brought this to our attention. And colleagues, no matter where you are in this debate, there are laws already in the books that protect and provide certain due processes for children who arrive at our borders in this country. A lot of what is not happening is that these children's due process rights are being violated and their resources are not there to provide basic things such as legal representation, proper places for them to stay, and proper contact with their families should they have any in the United States. At the simple, most simplest thing that this country should be doing is providing these young people the rights they have when they arrive at our borders, and we are failing to do that. Why are we failing to do that? Because the debate in Washington, D.C. is so intense, there are many people who are walking away from this issue and don't even want to deal with it. The Congress has failed to provide resources to address this issue. The President has promised us resources for these children that have yet to arrive. And what we have today is that some of our most treasured people in this world are young people, kids, that no matter where you live in this world, no matter what country you're from, we should be providing for. We, as a country, are violating their rights. That is not American, that is not right. And this is not a crisis that has come to us recently. This crisis has existed for some time now. Thousands upon thousands of children have been traveling dangerous trains, on top of those trains, being violated, being abused, being taken advantage of. And it's not until recently, when we got a little spike in the number of kids that are coming, and the media finally paid attention, about an atrocity that's been happening in our backyard for years, have we now come to pay attention? And the people who could resolve it, our federal government, are failing us. We've got to do what we can here in the City of Los Angeles to provide for these children. I'm very proud that our mayor has announced that he will work with nonprofit organizations to provide whatever service we can. We're doing what we can when the federal government has failed, but we're asking the federal government to do the minimal. And what's the minimal? Provide these children their basic due process and rights that we have promised through our laws, and we are not doing that now. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a very humanistic thing we can do, no matter if you're Republican, Democrat, or where you stand. If you really look at this issue and look at it for what it is, people are suffering and we should do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I just want to thank social service providers such as Caresen, Celaf, Clinica, Monsignor Romero for stepping up and really raising your voice and letting everyone know that we're here to help. Today, right now, at this very moment, the unaccompanied children from Central America, numbering in the tens of thousands, are being housed in detention centers all over the place. They're frightened, they are traumatized, they've been traumatized, and they are facing a very uncertain future. Just a few days ago, Congress went into recess without dealing with the issue on a substantive level, allowing for the issue to be consumed by politics. That serves no one, especially our youth. Our compassion for innocent children should have no boundaries and no borders. This is no time for judgment, it is time for compassion. This country can help, and we must, and we are doing so at the local level. I stand with my colleagues today, Gil Cedillo, Curran Price, Nury, everyone else on this council, and we compel the federal government to treat this as the humanitarian issue that it is and lead by example, which is how we're doing at the local level, to treat our neighbors as neighbors. There's just nothing more important that we can do right now to send the signal that we are here to help. Debemos tener compasión por estos niños. Thank you, gracias.
Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President, members. We spent much time talking about how we will deal with the influx of children that have crossed our borders. They've been alone, they've been escaping poverty, tragedy, and violence. But we also have to think about how we're gonna make sure these children are treated once they arrive here. These are kids, after all, who have arrived after weeks of dangerous traveling in hopes of finding compassion upon arrival. A high proportion of these kids are young women and men who have suffered rape and sexual abuse on their journey. They're scared, they're alone, they need help. I think it's incredibly important for us as a city to publicly show our support for these children and to stand with them. As an elected official, I want my voice to join those who are crying, calling for the federal government to take the kind of action that it has resisted taking for so long. They have a responsibility to provide proper care for these children. And we denounce any efforts to strip them of their right to have a fair immigration hearing and speedy reunification with their families. I know in my district, we've begun conversations with nonprofit groups and community organizations to find ways to support the work that they are doing on the ground with these youth. I've expressed my commitment to keep the Ninth District open to any temporary shelters that may be needed to give these children a safe place to be cared for, and I know that our mayor has certainly expressed this as well, as well as my colleagues here on the council. In the end, we must come together, we must find our compassion, must find our humanity, we must give these children a chance, and I urge, and I vote on this measure.
Mr. Bloomingfield.
Just wanted to briefly rise in strong support of this resolution. I rise as an L.A. City Council member, but also as a parent of young children. Anyone who has children and can't help but use that lens and see this for the humanitarian issue that it is. So I also want to point out, what we're talking about is opposing changes to a law that George Bush signed into law in terms of human trafficking and continuing to do the basics that is both, is a right for any child in this country. So again, I rise in strong support as a council member, member as a father, and as an American.
Thank you, Mr. Cedillo.
Members, let me thank all of you for joining us in this effort. I think the mayor said it best. These are children, and we should not forget that. First and foremost, if there's any lens that we should look at this issue, it's from the lens of our childhood. We are children, we cannot escape that. These children should be playing baseball or soccer, they should be at their dance and theater recitals like my granddaughters were this weekend. They should be enjoying the joys of childhood. And instead, these children have taken the most incredible, dangerous trek from Central America. They are fleeing the most violent country and countries of the world. Much of that violence is a product of our foreign policy. And so we have a moral responsibility to address their concerns. But as my colleague said, not just a moral responsibility, this is also a matter of law. And I'm very proud of our mayor, proud of the Office of Immigrant Affairs, for the response that this city is setting out. It distinguishes itself, for example, from the City of Marietta. In Marietta, we saw mob rule, we saw people skirt the law, we saw people break the law. And it wasn't the children who were in the bus. The children who were in the bus are protected as a matter of law, and we have obligations that were set forth. This motion calls upon the President not to change that law, to recognize these children for what they are and to respect that law as it is. Let me add that I'd like to thank the Office of Immigrant Affairs for their leadership on this matter. It is compassionate government, it is smart government, it is thoughtful government. We are doing all that we can do. And so I urge all of us to step forward and support this motion for obvious reasons. I would like to ask all of us to think of our childhood, and think of our joys of our childhood, the laughter, the optimism, the innocence, and then think of that one moment in our life where we felt tremendous insecurity. And then think of that insecurity compounded by a trek from a country, hanging on top of a train, walking through ice cold rivers, walking through unbearable heat. And then think of these children as they arrive. Think of yourself in that situation, and then think of what type of welcome you would like. In that situation, I know that you would all choose for this city to be as humanitarian and as gracious and as generous as we've proven to be. And so with that, I ask all of you to support this motion. Let's call upon the President to choose optimism, as we heard him say, to not be cynical about this situation, to be as bold and as brilliant as he can be in embracing this situation our moral obligation to create a better world and a better future for these children. Thank you so much. I ask for an I vote.
Thank you, well said by all of the members. Let's prepare to vote on this item, let us open.
Excuse me, Mr. President, just for the record, I believe there was a desire to amend the resolution to state the 2013-2015 federal legislative program.
Okay, so let's prepare to vote as amended, let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, and I do also want to announce, go on, I do want to announce that general public comment is closed. What do, Mr. Corrigan?
Very much, Mr. President, if I might just make a brief introduction. Colleagues, one of the most prestigious honors that a young person who's interested in public service in our country can receive is to be an awardee of the Harry S. Truman Scholarship. This is one of the most competitive scholarships in our country. It's awarded to people who have demonstrated extraordinary academic success, leadership potential, and a commitment to public service. I tried to get it, I failed when I was at USC, I was a finalist, but I didn't quite make it. I'm proud to say that my alma mater has now been the recipient of 18 Truman Scholarships in the years since I was there. And I want to take a moment to introduce you to the latest winner, a young man from North Hollywood named Oscar De Los Santos. Oscar, if you can come on up and join me here. Oscar is a native of North Hollywood, first-generation college student, and in his freshman year, he wrote an essay about leadership, and as a result of writing that essay, he won a lunch with President Obama. He and six other young people had the opportunity to have lunch with the President, and now this year, he's one of only two recipients in the state of California of the Harry S. Truman Scholarship. So although this is Oscar's first time visiting us here in the council chambers, I know it's not going to be his last time here, and I fully expect that one day, in the not-too-distant future, he'll be sitting in one of these seats. So I am proud to present to you Oscar De Los Santos.
Let's give him a round of applause. Well done.
And on behalf of all of the members of the city council, it's a pleasure to present to Oscar this certificate of recognition on winning the Harry S. Truman Scholarship for 2014.
Wonderful.
Congratulations.
Very impressive. That brings us where, Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for posting referral.
They are posted and referred. Members, that would bring us to announcements. Announcements, members? No announcements? If I can have everyone in the council chambers, please rise. If everyone can rise as we prepare to adjourn. Mr. Labange, was your hand the first one I saw?
Mr. Corretts, I want to, yeah, Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to adjourn today in memory of Jim Brady, perhaps the greatest of our activists against gun violence, who was a tragic but ultimately upbeat and loving example of someone who faced horrific calamity and lasting harm, but turned that into a relentless campaign against the demon that did that harm, which in this case is our culture's overly permissive attitude about gun violence and its tools. He had worked for Senator Everett Dirksen of Illinois, William Roth, Jr. of Delaware, and also for the administrations of Presidents Nixon and Ford, becoming, before becoming a key part of President Reagan's team. And whether or not people agreed with Reagan's policies, they all found Brady to be a humble and gently witty person, and that was much appreciated by the press corps and the public alike. Then came March 30th, 1981, when a deranged would-be assassin, John Hinckley, Jr., shot at President Reagan with a handgun, nearly killing him, wounding three others, including Brady. And although he was shot in the head, he survived hours of delicate surgery, many subsequent operations, and would suffer partial paralysis, constant pain, slurring of speech, and impaired memory. But he took on the endemic strain of gun violence that our society faces and kills so many every day, and he created the Brady Campaign along with his wife Sarah. They became the iconic champions of the gun control movement in our country. Our nation's requiring background checks for those who want to purchase handguns is named after Jim, and he never stopped advocating for ways to halt gun violence. He was a foe to the senseless proliferation of guns that cost him so much, and he was a hero to those whom he protected, whether they thought well of him or not. He was awarded the Presidential Medal of Freedom in 1996 by President Clinton. In 2000, the press room, briefing room in the White House was named in his honor, and the following year, Handgun Control Incorporated was renamed the Brady Campaign to prevent gun violence. We lost Jim Brady on Monday at the age of 73. Surviving him were his wife Sarah, his son Scott, daughter Melissa, and may we all remain dedicated to the cause of ending gun violence in his memory.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, and I salute Mr. Corretts for remembering James Brady and that horrible incident, but how he rose from that tragedy to send a message. Someone who went too early but who made so much a contribution is Andrea Rich, 71 years old, a great administrator at UCLA. She did a wonderful job there and then was tapped to run the Los Angeles County Museum of Art. She's survived by her sons and family, she was a very dynamic and loving person. Let us remember Andrea Rich. Also, members, for those who are a little older, Jess Barlow, for 31 years, right there on Channel 4 or on KCBS, later on with KCET, wonderful, real, all Walter Cronkite, if you will, for Southern California. He passed, he was 84 years old. We wish his ascension quickly and he could report from heaven and criticize us from there, but we do remember the great Jess Barlow. And finally, someone I personally know lived to be 99, Saul Shankman. He was a great man who lived in Las Feliz District, born in Toronto, Canada, migrated here, was a chemist, was involved in business, but he hiked daily in Griffith Park. And he also would take great hikes and walks on the coast. One time he walked from San Diego all the way to San Francisco on the coast. I would see him walking in Griffith Park all the time, and he did daily until he was 95, four years ago. He truly is loved by many people. He's survived by his daughter, grandson, and others. Remember the great Saul Shankman, the greatest hiker I think Griffith Park had ever known? He would have walked around the world three times, if you count it, every time he walked from his home on Lower Las Feliz Boulevard up into the park for all those years. Saul Shankman.
Okay, I'll continue to look to my right, I don't see any others. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues, I, we've been joined today by family members of a member of the city family who passed away recently at a young age. And I am asking that we adjourn today in memory of Fernando Pacheco. He was a construction inspector with the Bureau of Contract Administration who passed away on July 17, just as past July 17, at the age of 54. He is a resident of Los Angeles and was hired by the Department of Public Works on August 7, 2006. The majority of his work involved inspection of B-permits in the valley. He was a very good employee and worked well with engineers and the public and was very well-liked by his colleagues and the public. He liked to mentor the other inspectors and was always willing to help when needed. He was respected and well-liked and will be missed by his coworkers and colleagues. And we've been joined today here by his wife, Margarita, his son Fernando, Jr., Jonathan, and Catherine. And at this moment, I'd ask that we all please give a prayer to a family member, Fernando Pacheco, who passed away, serving the city of Los Angeles and being a great role model, not only for his colleagues at work, but in his community. And want to welcome the family and thank you. And our prayers and wishes and condolences are with you and the family. Thank you for being here today. I also wish to adjourn in memory of Benedicto Melendez, a loving, caring, well-respected man who passed away on July 6. Devoted to his family and country, Benedicto was always a pillar of gentle strength. Born to a family whose roots in Chihuahua, Mexico, extend back 400 years, Benedicto was a member of the Club Chihuahuenza, serving many terms as Presidente de Festejos. He was drafted into the U.S. Army in 1953, serving in the 10th Mountain Division, 86 Infantry Regiment in Germany, and was honorably discharged. As a member of the American Legion Unit 227, he participated as part of the Honor Guard that won the 2008 and 2009 State Awards for its exceptionally high standards of precision, appearance, and conduct. He was also a dedicated employee with Filtral Corporation in Los Angeles for 35 years. Benedicto is survived by his loving wife of almost 58 years, Maria Esther, daughter Stelma, and Martha, son Ben, and three grandchildren, as well as by his brother and two sisters. He will be dearly missed by a very wide circle, family and friends, across two countries. And he exemplified many immigrants and families who have come to this country and serve honorably in our armed services.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. To any more on the left side, Mr. Sadio.
Members, we just read yesterday the passing of Warren Benis, esteemed scholar and professor from USC. Warren Benis passes at the age of 89. He's a, he was the authoritative voice on leadership and organizational change in this country. He's advisor to many presidents, college presidents, presidents of our country, organizations, CEOs, et cetera. Warren Benis was 19 when he entered in World War II and was a leader of a battalion where he said he learned the first principles of leadership. He went on to finish school at Antioch, PhD from MIT in Economics and Social Sciences. Writer of many books, I found the most important one, Leaders. He says, "Managers do things right, leaders do the right thing." Warren Benis went on to write another incredible book called Organizational Genius, which he talks about how teams come together to make institutional change. And he highlights many great examples, those who created the computer, the atom bomb, the Clinton campaign, and how those were organizations of change, of dynamic change and institutional change. He was a mentor, I would say. I had a privilege of meeting him shortly after I was elected in Sacramento and spent some time with him. We were always seeking his assistance for our team and team building. A great, great humanitarian, a great leader, and he will be sorely missed. He was the head of the School of Leadership at USC, where he taught from 1992 until, most recently, when he retired and left that campus.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. I don't see any others. I do want to mention that tomorrow, Mr. Parks, Mr. Price, and I will adjourn in the memory of Brenda Marsh Mitchell, a very dear friend. The reason why I mention it today is because her services are Friday. The three of us would like to attend. So I'm requesting if anybody that's scheduled to be off, if you can adjust your calendar to afford us the opportunity to attend these services, it would be appreciated. So with that said, members, today's meeting is adjourned.